Good evening. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, October the 27th. And I now call this Winwood City School Board of Education meeting to order. If everyone would please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Seymour, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knighton.
Present.
Ms. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Spielman.
Present.
Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here. 2.01 District Honors/Recognitions, Gifts and Introductions. And Introductions, excuse me. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Smith, and good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see such a great, wonderful crowd here this evening. So we're anxious to get into some of the great things happening here in our school system, and to get to celebrate with some of our young people and our staff members this evening and families. So we'll start off for this particular month, the month of October. We'll begin with the Kiwanis Character is Key Award. This month is the Character Trait Responsibility. And so if we have our Kiwanis rep here this evening, if they could come forward, that would be fantastic, if they were able to make it. All right. Otherwise, I'm a Kiwanis member. I can step in and represent. But we're going to begin with a student at the Early Childhood Central Campus. But just, I'd like to read a little bit about this award. Students are selected for the Kiwanis Character is Key Responsibility Award based on the following description. Responsibility means following through, thinking before you act, doing a task to the best of your ability when you said you would do it, and being able to count on you and your word. The Kiwanis Character is Key Responsibility Award is sponsored by the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, a business partner of Winwood City Schools. And the student so recognized will receive a LaRosa's gift card as a part of the award. So we're very excited right now to acknowledge and celebrate Early Childhood Central Campus kindergarten student Ayesha Zuberry. And I'd love to read a little bit about Ayesha while she's here. And Ayesha, we'd love to invite whoever you brought with you this evening to come up as well. So Mr. Hargrove, Ayesha's principal writes the following about her. "Ayesha is a wonderful and responsible student who consistently puts forth her very best effort. She takes great care of both her classroom and her peers, showing kindness and consideration in everything she does. Her trustworthy and safe behavior both in and out of the classroom set a positive example for others. Ayesha's motivation is truly inspiring to her fellow students, and she exemplifies the warrior way with pride." Congratulations, Ayesha. The next award this evening is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month Award. This award hearkens back to the month of September. This particular athlete was unable to join us for this particular opportunity last month because she was playing in a game. But we're excited that she was able to join us this evening. And I'd love to read a little bit about this award. To be nominated for Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, students must do a lot of things. Namely, maintain an academic standard of 3.0 GPA or higher in the previous quarter, show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, and other students and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to practice, games, and skill development, demonstrate honesty, integrity, and playing by the rules, and finally, have high moral character. The Skyline Student Athlete of the Month Award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Winwood City Schools. And student athletes who are honored in this way receive, as you might imagine, a Skyline Chili gift card. So we'd like to read at this time and celebrate 10th grade sophomore student in the sport of volleyball for the month of September with a 4.0 GPA. Please acknowledge and welcome Ma- Maia Johnson. And it's Maia, right?
Ma-
Maia. Thank you. Thank you, Maia. Appreciate that. So I get to read some great things about Maia. And we'd also love to invite whoever Maia you brought with you this evening to come up and also be in a photo. But I'd love to read these great things from your coach, Ms. Alicia Johnson. "Maia is an up-and-coming sophomore on the volleyball team, quickly making a name for herself with her exceptional defensive abilities. As a freshman, she impressed coaches and teammates alike, playing on both the freshman and JV teams. Her performance and work ethic earned her a spot on both the JV and varsity squads this year during her sophomore campaign. She is a dedicated student athlete who continues to grow in skill, confidence, and leadership. Her athleticism and determination make her a key asset to the team, and her potential to become one of the top players in the program is abundantly clear. She is also developing into a strong leader both on and off the court. Keep an eye on her for the next two years. She is absolutely poised to become a standout leader at the school and a dominant force on the volleyball court." Congratulations. The next recognition this evening is also hearkening back to the month of September. We wanted to circle back and catch up with a couple of our very talented, academically talented students. In this case, it was for the College Board National Recognition Awards. And we had four students that qualified for this rather prestigious national-level award bestowed through criteria that is set forth by the College Board. And these National Board Recognizations would go to three students who were able to join us this evening. I'd love to read just a little bit about this award and then call them all up. But this application for this award is very comprehensive, demands a high level of follow-through to complete the process. This is what the College Board website actually says about it. "The College Board National Recognition Program awards academic honors to high-performing students to help them stand out at colleges and universities and celebrate their hard work. Students of all backgrounds from all schools nationwide are eligible to claim an award based on their achievement on the PSAT, the NMSQT, which is the National Merit Qualifying Test, the PSAT, or AP exams. These awards are among the highest achieving students in their-- these awardees are among the highest achieving students in their communities, including those from lesser-known or smaller high schools or rural areas. And as a result, many colleges are eager to recruit these students. The criteria for earning an award is as follows. Score in the top 10% of PSAT or NMSQT test takers in their high school, be a state's first generation of test takers, and/or a state rural or small-town test taker, or earn a 3 or higher on two different distinct AP exams in 8th, 9th, or 10th grade. The other criteria is you have to earn a cumulative GPA of at least a B+, that's a 3.3 or higher, or an 87 to 89% or higher at the time of the application." So we are excited at this time to recognize three students, the first of which, if you'd help me welcome, Logan Bonetwala. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that Logan was the recipient of the College Board School Recognition Award. The next award is for First Generation and School Recognition Award, and that goes to Brittany Johnson. Congratulations, Brittany. And the third recipient this evening with awards for First Generation and School Recognition Awards from the College Board goes to Ms. Stephanie Espaniza Ruiz. Congratulations, Stephanie. The next award this evening, we're excited to announce the Horace Mann Fine Arts Student of the Month Award for the month of October. Let me read just a very little bit about this award and how you can qualify for it. "To be nominated for the Horace Mann Fine Arts Student of the Month, students must maintain an academic standard of 3.0 GPA or higher, show respect for directors, fellow ensemble members, contest adjudicators, teachers, as well as other students and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to rehearsals, concerts, and personal skill development, demonstrate honesty, integrity, and finally, have high moral character." The Horace Mann Fine Arts Student of the Month Award is sponsored by the Horace Mann Educators Corporation, a business partner of Winwood City Schools. And the students who are honored receive an Amazon gift card. The student this evening that we are thrilled to celebrate for the October 2025 Horace Mann Fine Arts Student of the Month Award is senior in choir and orchestra with a weighted GPA of 3.143, 12th grader Naimee Groves. So I'd love to read a little bit about you, Naimea. And please, whoever you brought with you this evening, they're welcome to come up as well. "Naimee Groves has been a cellist in the orchestra program since 5th grade," writes Dr. Joshua Thompson, Naimee's orchestra teacher. "And ever since the 5th grade, she has been a leader in her section and an inspiration to all of her orchestra classmates. At one point in her studies, she was literally the only cellist in her class and thus performed at every concert as a true soloist on her part. In each performance during that time and since then, she has shown incredible preparation, confidence, care, and precision, which has amazed her fellow students, teachers, and audience members alike. She has been very active in a number of other activities, including the Cincinnati String Project, after-school lesson and chamber music program, as well as recently joining Varsity Ensemble. She is a natural leader and an encouraging classmate to many, and it is extremely exciting to be able to nominate her for this special award this month." Congratulations, Naimee. Next award this evening is Character's Key Award for the Character Trait Respect. And this will go to a Winwood's primary school student. But just to read a bit about this award. The Character's Key Award, sponsored by Kiwanis, and this particular trait, respect, is based on the following. "Respect means to actively pursue behavior toward others that promotes awareness and understanding that all human beings have value and worth, being considerate of the rights of others, and showing regard for public and private properties." The Kiwanis Character is Key Respect Award is sponsored by the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, a partner of Winwood City Schools. And the student so honored will receive a LaRosa's gift card as a part of the award. This month, the Character's Key Respect Award goes to 1st grade student Jasmine Young. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment just to write some of the great things shared about Jasmine, or Jazz, as I understand she might like to be called. This is from Ms. Plummer, her principal. "Jasmine comes to school each day ready and eager to learn. She greets her teachers and classmates with a friendly hello and consistently shows kindness and support to those around her. Jasmine helps her peers follow directions in a caring and positive way. She demonstrates respect in all areas of the school, even when no one happens to be watching. It is a true pleasure to nominate Jasmine as a model of respect for this month." So congratulations. The next award on the list is the Kiwanis Student of the Month Award. And we're very excited about this. Just a bit about this award. The Kiwanis Student of the Month Award is sponsored by the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, a partner of Winwood City Schools. And the student so honored, again, would receive a LaRosa's gift card as a part of this award. We're excited to recognize a Project Success student this month. In this case, it is a junior, an 11th grade student. And we're excited to celebrate with her and acknowledge her. Please help me welcome and acknowledge Elizabeth Wooten. All right. Tear ducts under control here. This is a wonderful recommendation that I'm thrilled to share with you all. This is written by her teacher, Elizabeth's teacher, Mr. Patrick Reister. "In the Project Success program, many of our students face challenges in their academic careers, but they find ways to overcome these challenges and achieve success. This year, Elizabeth Wooten has been a model for her peers and leads by the example that she sets." Liz is actually new to Winwood's schools this year. And we all know being new and changing schools can be hard, right? But in spite of this, and the uncertainty around not only this, but being moved around a lot, have created obstacles for her that she has overcome. And she's overcome these challenges and made graduation her main focus. Since beginning in the program on September 4th, she has earned eight high school credits already and spent over 220 hours on task in the Edmentum software. And that's as of the 8th of October. In so doing, she has also maintained a 3.0 grade point average while facing these challenges. "As a staff at Project Success, we have some core values that we try to embody with our students and with each other. One of those values is, laugh, life is hard, but school doesn't have to be. The way that Liz faces her challenges and enters our building smiling and greeting everyone embodies this. We also, quote, 'treat each other-- treat others, excuse me, the way we want to be treated,' unquote. And this is another value that Liz clearly shows us every day in the classroom. She looks out for those around her and makes sure that they have what they need to be successful. When I asked Liz what she wants to do beyond graduation, she said helping others is one of her top priorities. She hopes to get an associate's degree in criminal justice, then a bachelor's, and then on to law school to hopefully obtain and hopefully become an environmental lawyer. Our vision statement at Project Success says, quote, "We envision a school where each student, regardless of background or past experience, feels a sense of belonging, builds the skills to thrive in and beyond the classroom, and is equipped to lead lives of meaning, contribution, and self-determination. Our graduates are confident, compassionate, and culturally aware individuals who challenge the status quo and shape a more just and vibrant future," unquote. When Liz reaches graduation, she will be one of those individuals who will indeed challenge the status quo and shape a vibrant future." Congrats, Liz. The next award this month is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month Award. Just a bit about this particular award. To be nominated for the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, students must maintain a GPA of 3.0 or higher, show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, students, and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to practice, games, and skill development, demonstrate honesty and integrity and playing by the rules, and have high moral character. The Skyline Student Athlete of the Month Award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Winwood City Schools. Students, student athletes who are so honored receive a Skyline Chili gift card. We're excited for the month of October 2025 to recognize Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, 8th grader in cross-country with a 4.0 GPA, Ahmed Traore. And while Mr. Ryle is getting the photo opportunity, I'd love to read this recognition from cross-country coach, Mr. Matt Allender. "Ahmed is a fine, upstanding young man of character whose positive energy inspires others to turn their frown upside down. Whether in the classroom or in cross-country-- or on the cross-country course, he treats others with respect and dignity. He always seeks ways of improving himself and will be a lifelong learner and athlete. I have no doubt. Ahmed is definitely one of the shiniest treasures we happen to have right now at Winwood's Middle School." Congratulations, Ahmed. Now we turn to the October 2025 Skyline Teacher of the Month. "To be nominated for this particular award, teachers must demonstrate the following. Excellence in the classroom by using instructional practices that support high academic achievement. Motivation in encouraging and motivating students to surpass their expectations, both academically as well as socially. Leadership by having a positive attitude with students, parents, colleagues, and community. Creativity and imagination by demonstrating this creativity in teaching and in a way that inspires students to learn and achieve. Dedication by showing excellent attendance, punctuality, and overall dependability. And finally, communication in communicating effectively to their classrooms, parents, colleagues, and beyond." The Skyline Teacher of the Month Award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Winwood City Schools. And the teachers who are honored in this way receive a Skyline Chili gift certificate. Please help me welcome, if you would, Winwood's middle school coach and staff member, Mr. Winfield Franklin. And Mr. Franklin, who did you bring with you this evening?
Me myself.
You yourself. Could we have the nominator also come forward too?
He coached my friends.
Okay. So that counts too. He was nominated by Dr. Brown. So I'd love to read this wonderful recommendation. "In our lifetime, we may be lucky enough to be a part of someone's life who walks the talk. To define this walking the talk, it would be an individual that-- A, they always do what they say what they will do. B, their word is their bond, and he or she embodies the values they model daily. In my experience, individuals that fit this designation are few and far in between. Nevertheless, when you are honored to work with such an individual that walks the talk, they truly spread hope, dependability, and trust. Special educators are cut from a different cloth. Their lens sees only that which is good in all children. Their heart screams, 'I love kids, I like a challenge,' give me kids that are furthest from the opportunity. They see outliers that possess true potential, and they believe with every fiber of their being that with a bit of love, reinforcement, and determination, these children can be the best version of themselves. This does not happen overnight. It takes weeks and months of undying determination, unconditional love, and sustained effort. Tonight, we have had the distinct honor of recognizing one of our own. He is a Winwood's warrior with 14 years of service and 16 years of coaching. Every student he comes into contact with becomes an improved version of themselves because of him. It's with great respect that we give you Coach Mr. Winfield Franklin." Mr. Franklin, thanks for all you do. All right. We now have the esteemed honor to acknowledge someone for the next award. This is the African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame Award. We have a student at Winwood's High School who has been inducted into the African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame. This took place on May 24th at the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame Awards Dinner and Induction Ceremony, which was in Riviera Beach, Florida. A little jealous. That's above average. This student is only-- is one of only seven youth golfers from around the United States who were selected for this prestigious honor for the 2025 school year. So please help me welcome, if you would, Winwood's High School student athlete, Everson Stallworth Jr. And Everson, if you brought-- yes, if you brought anyone with you this evening, they're more than welcome. Congratulations, Everson. That's tremendous. Last, but certainly not least, we have an Educational Impact Award that we're excited to be able to celebrate and acknowledge this evening. It is the high school-- excuse me, the principal of Winwood's High School and the Board of Education, as well as all of the colleagues and district leadership wish to congratulate Mr. Martin. He's the recipient of the Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated Educational Impact Award for his educational impact on the community. As one of three honorees, he was presented with this award on September 20th at the inaugural Mahogany Shades of Brown Ball at the Schiff Family Center in Cincinnati. Please help me acknowledge, celebrate, Principal of Winwood's High School, Mr. Eric Martin. Board, that concludes the recognitions, gifts, honors, and introductions for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Definitely a highlight of our meeting, as always. That's a wonderful way to start off our meeting. Congratulations to everyone who received an award or a recognition. We appreciate you for helping telling our story through what you do for this district. And we appreciate our partners, the Kiwanis Club and Skyline, for partnering with our district to help celebrate all the accomplishments that are happening here. Next, we'll take a brief recess. That'll be no longer than five minutes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and resume our meeting. If everybody could grab their seats. Always exciting. Recognitions. We went from standing room only to plenty of seats available. I love that. All right. Stepping back one time to 3.01, Mr. Seymour, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and jump to 5.01, Winwood Teachers Association, WWTA. Do we have a representative in the house today?
Yes, we do.
Nothing to say? Well, we thank you for being here. Absolutely. Wonderful. Moving on to 5.02, Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OPEC. Do we have a representative here today? Seeing none, we'll move right on into 6.01, the waiving and reading of the minutes. Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes for the following meetings, the regular meeting on September 22nd, 2025, and the regular meeting on October 13th, 2025.
I'll second that.
That's been motioned and seconded. Are there any room for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, let's go ahead and run the vote.
Ms. Knighton.
Aye.
Ms. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Spielman.
Aye.
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye. That vote passed unanimously. Board, thank you very much. Let's move right on to 6.02, the approval of the minutes as presented. Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes as requested for the following meetings, September 22nd, 2025, and the regular meeting on October 13th, 2025.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I just have one correction I think we need to make. On Schedule A, under resignations and retirements, it says '05' instead of '25.
Okay, thank you.
Just, it's just a typo. But just for clarification, that's all.
Great catch, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. That's been noted, anybody else? All right, let's move on to calling the vote.
Ms. Knighton?
Yes, to the 9/22 regular meeting. I abstain from the 10/13 meeting, I was up there.
October 13th abstaining?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously, board, thank you very much. We'll move on into 7.01, the financial statements presented by Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, board, before you, you have the financial statements for the month of September. Page one, you have the bank reconciliation for September of 2025. And on page two, I share with you the year-to-date revenues for the general fund of $21.5 million, and the month-to-date revenues of $6.1 million, of which $3 million is real estate taxes and approximately $2.6 million in state foundation. Then on pages three and four, you have your expenditures by function and object. Our year-to-date expenditures in the general fund are $16.3 million. We are currently approximately 2.3% under budget, or approximately $1.5 million. And then on page five is your year-to-date activity for all funds, and the district had unencumbered fund balance of all funds on September 30th of approximately $22 million.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Let the financial statements be presented, be filed for audit. Next on the agenda is 8.01, the investment report. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the month of September, we had approximately $38.7 million invested for interest earned during the month of September of $141,000, of which general fund was $127,000, and the building funds were approximately $14,000.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to move, we approve the investment report as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and run the vote.
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously, thank you very much, board. Let's move into 8.02, the resolution requesting authority to file a modified tax budget for 2026-2027 fiscal year. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, board, as you know, we just adopted the '25-'26 appropriations. We adopted the five-year forecast at the September meeting, and now we're getting ready to, I'm getting permission from you to use that five-year forecast to file our tax budget for the '26-'27 school year. And I need to get a resolution approving you to allow me to use the five-year forecast for the general fund budget. I'll bring that back for your approval at the organizational meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'd move, we approve the resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 2026-2027 fiscal year as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded, board, at this time, do we have any discussion? Any questions?
I do have a question. How does this impact with the new not five-year, three-plus-one, two-plus-two, whatever?
Well, this is, this is for fiscal year '26-'27, so it won't impact those projected years. It's just the next year.
Gotcha, thank you.
Which is filed.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Seymour, let's run the vote.
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously, thank you, board. We're gonna move right on into 9.01, School Reports. Mr. Denny, you have the floor.
Thanks again, President Smith, and again, good evening, board, and good evening, everyone. 9.01, School Reports, board, you should have before you a list of upcoming events between now and the next board meeting in November. And this is definitely concert season, so we have quite a few musical performances happening, as well as some exciting athletics. So there's multiple concerts this week, a cappella tomorrow evening, and the high school marching band indoor concert Wednesday. We also have parent-teacher conference opportunity on Thursday, and a professional development day Thursday, the 31st. But I'd again like to just take this quick opportunity to highlight the movie screening coming up. The film Counted Out, which is about the power of mathematics and the fact that math is like literacy, a human right, and something that, you know, everyone has, that everyone can be mathematical. So we'd love to have as many people as available come out that evening. There will be light refreshments served as well. So just want to make sure I take a moment to highlight that event this evening at 5:30 at the Dave Bell Performing Arts Center at the Wynton Woods North Campus. And doors open at 5:30. Show starts at 6:00. High school playoffs coming up this Friday night, that's pretty exciting. High school strings orchestra this coming Saturday. PTA meeting the 6th, and then next, and that would round out the list of upcoming school events, board. Thank you.
A question. On the movie screening, I know the tickets are free, but do you need a ticket to get in? If somebody...
Still moving to meet people without a ticket, Dr. Ragland?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's more for hard doctors have an accurate count for the refreshments.
I just seen, I'd seen it advertised in a couple places, and then I, I had an email where if I wanted to attend to get tickets. I got those, but I didn't know if somebody saw it, if they...
Thanks for the question. Yeah, no, everyone's welcome, and the seating capacity of the auditorium is 804. So if we get that, we'll be thrilled.
I'm 805.
There we go.
Turn them away. One more quick question, Mr. Denny, do we know, is this playoff game a home game for us?
It is a home game against Little Miami, yes, sir. Excited about that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that report, Mr. Denny. Let's move on into 9.02, Student Achievement Report. Mr. Denny, you have the floor.
Thanks again, Mr. Smith. You should have before you the 2025-2026 One Plan Update Document. This Wynton Woods One Plan Update will be presented by Ms. Tanya Bray, Executive Director of Student Services, Dr. Adrian Martin, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning for Pre-K 6, as well as Dr. Tamara Ragland, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning for Grade 7-12.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're gonna go over and just give a brief update on the One Plan. The One Plan for our district is a systematic way of improving outcomes for all students at all grade levels and all of our buildings. The way this One Plan was generated, it was with a group of us together going over, doing a root cause analysis of what was happening and what the needs are for the district. We have four main goals. We have a graduation goal, a literacy goal, a math goal, as well as a special, students with special, students with disabilities goal. And what we're gonna do is kind of go over, as requested, an update to where we are as it relates to this three-year plan. The plan was written in the '23-'24 school year to go for the '24-'25, '25-'26, '26-'27 school year. So we've completed one year of this plan. Prior to this plan, there was a plan that we wrote previously that we had to kind of stop that plan to start this plan because ODU switched gears on us a little bit, and we had to kind of start from ground zero as it relates to what we're going to do to move the students and improve our outcomes for the district.
So our first goal is our graduation rate. And our SMART goal and key strategies were to improve our graduation rate by 2% by 2020, 2027. We developed graduation plans for each student in 9th grade. We're implementing our early warning system with interventions. That's through our Each Child on Track initiative, of which this is our third year for that. We are continuing our after-school tutoring opportunities. We've hired this year a career tech coordinator position to support success plans, K-12, and career tech education opportunities. These opportunities can also be seen as an intervention for attendance in having our students want to come to school and combat chronic absenteeism as well. And we are also, or have developed, a high school MTSS process and committees along with a near-new Tier 2 course for English Language Arts. We also hired a reading specialist who is teaching that new class at the high school. Our measures in progress, again, our target was a 2% increase in graduation rate, which we exceeded that target. Our increase in graduation rate went from 89% in 2023 to 90.6% in 2024, and we are currently sitting at 92.7% in 2025. Our target was a 15% reduction in chronic absenteeism over these three years. So it was decreased from 39% in 2023, and then it went to 36% in 2024, and then to 37% in 2025. Our target was a 20% decrease in student discipline through our PBIS structures, which are our Positive Behavioral and Instructional Supports. We decreased our office referrals from 23, 2023, to 2024 by 13.4%, and then 3.5% from 2024 to 2025, for a total decrease of 16.5% to date.
For our literacy and reading goal, the SMART goal and key strategies for this particular goal was to increase our performance on the OST by 10% in, by 2027. Right now, we formally adopted the SAVIS curriculum, which is my view, my perspectives. We also have Success Maker, which is another component of the SAVIS curriculum. We did actually put together a district-wide MTSS team so that we can kind of intervene and have that systematic discourse as to how we will support buildings when they're trying to implement their tiered levels of support at their campus level. We were awarded the Comprehensive Literacy Grant, the Comprehensive State Literacy Grant. The modules for our Science of Reading were completed district-wide upon writing this plan. We developed a family and community literacy leadership team, which was, today was the first meeting, and it was, you know, a success so far. And the goal of that is to kind of invite the community in to kind of gain more understanding of what's happening in the district around literacy. And literacy is not just reading. Literacy actually is across the curriculum. So the goal is to interface with our community so that everyone understands what our expectations are and what we would like to see the outcomes in Wynton Woods City Schools. The measures in progress, the target was to increase the MAP, the NWE MAP, by 30% over the course of this plan. The MAP is a formative opportunity for us to intervene to help our students perform when they actually take the OST. So this, if you look at the data, we started with the '23-'24 school year. And if we look at fall, and this is fall, fall, and fall of the years, 2023, 2024, 25, 25, 26. So when we wrote the plan, it started with 28%, and we're now at 30% in the '25-'26 Fall Administration for Third Grade, 24% for Fourth Grade, 25%, which is a 3% increase for Fifth Grade. We started at 27% for Sixth Grade, and we're up to 29% for the '25-'26 Administration. So there is some increase. There are some areas that we need to definitely focus on, but ultimately, this informs our ability to utilize the MTSS process to provide the students what they need. The Comprehensive Literacy Grant helps us provide professional learning opportunities for our staff members so they can intervene accordingly.
Likewise, Grade 7, we had a decrease of 41% to 26%. Eighth Grade, we had a decrease from 29% proficiency to 23%. And then with the end of course exams at the high school level, our target was a 30% increase. And so for ELA 2, we have a 42.3%, and then we have a 40.8%. This year, we do not have the data yet because this is fall. So EOC scores come out in the spring, so these are spring scores.
And what we also want to call mention to, and Mr. Denny does have a copy of the the actual SMART goals for the district, because what the MAP does, those are student measures in our One Plan, and that helps us provide the supports that is necessary. But what you will have in front of you shortly is just an outline of the SMART goal for the district that aligns to the NWEA student measure that we were asked to present. So if you look at that, it says by the end, or by June 30th, 2027, we will improve the performance of all students, all grades, students at or in Wynton Woods City Schools to increase 10% in reading literacy using the state report card. So that's our ultimate goal. And what happens with this is there's a system called the CCIP on the ODU website, and what we have to do is kind of go in that system, use the dropdowns to kind of select what aligns to what we're gonna do as a district, and that actually gives us the goal that's going to support the outcomes of increasing our students' ability to learn and grow and achieve in the district. So if you look at the literacy for OST, if we look at '23-'24, where you see the highlights of green, those are the percentage of increase from the '23-'24, when the plan was written, to the '24-'25 school year. And the grade levels that actually did have an increase were Third Grade, Seventh Grade, and Eighth Grade for literacy reading OST.
Goal three is mathematics. The SMART goal was to increase math proficiency by 15% by 2027. So our key strategies are that we are piloting a highly qualified HQIM math curriculum in Grade 6 to 12. We have additional math instructional coaching support in K-6, as well as 7 and 8. We have after-school tutoring opportunities. We have the implementation of ZERN Math in Grades K to 8. We also have high dosage tutoring with varsity tutors in Grade 7 and 8. And we have the Use of Common Summit of Short Cycle Assessments to check for understanding so that we can intervene earlier. And we are doing this through the use of PARE assessment. So our measures in progress are that we have a target of a are that we have a target of a 15% increase on NWEA MAP, and these are all fall scores so that we can compare fall to fall to fall of all three years.
For third grade, and looking at the data for MAP, the NWEA MAP, it started at 41%. We're now at 28%. For fourth grade, 35%. We're at 22%. For fifth grade, 24% was the starting percentage, and now, we're still at 24%. And for sixth grade, we have start of 23% and we're now at 18%. Now, what this screams to us is that what we have to do is make sure that we kind of adopt a HQIM for math for K-5 so that we're able to actually have the materials and resources in front of the students that are going to help them perform on this assessment. This is fall to fall to fall. If you wanted to look at cohort data, you would just go diagonally to see how the third grade has performed, the fourth grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, so on and so forth. But ultimately, Core One instruction is what we need to make sure is strong in order for these numbers to change. And we've had conversation, yes, Dr. Ragland talked about the pilot for six through 12. We definitely will, are having conversations about five through, K through five adoption so that we can make sure that we strengthened our Tier One. And again, these are NWEA MAP that helps inform what we need to do so we can see the outcome and the growth on the OST.
Since we're on this slide, I just have one question. Is that 3% correct, or is that a typo?
That is 3%, but keep in mind, this, these are MAP scores. These are not OST scores. So, it allows us to know now where our students are struggling, but when we look at OST in just a minute, you will see seventh grade last year and what their proficiency was, and these are now the current eighth graders. So, we know we have a lot of room for growth and improvement, and there are things that we are doing to work, work toward that. So, that's why we have MAP and why we use it, because it gives us that message early so that we can intervene, as Dr. Martin said. And so, for 23, 24, grade seven, we've gone from 37% to 23%. Grade eight, it's 37% proficient to 3% proficient.
And that's the number of students?
That is the percent of students that are proficient on NWEA MAP. MAP is a benchmark score or a benchmark assessment, excuse me. We give that assessment three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. And we can use that assessment to give us an idea of where our students are, and so we can intervene. We can also use that assessment as a predictor in terms of what would be our students' achievement level, given their percentile score. So, for high school, the target is a 15% increase in our EOC scores. So, in grade nine, we're talking about Algebra I, and we have 36%, 36.8% proficiency, and we've seen a decrease to 30.2% proficient. In geometry, we have seen an increase of 8.3% proficient to 17.2% proficient. And again, these test scores are released in the spring, so we do not yet have 25, 26 scores. So, if you look at our math OST data, our SMART goal is, says by June 30th of 2027, we will improve the performance of all students, all grades, students at or in Wynton Wood City to increase 15, 15% in math using the state report card. So, our math OST results, you can see that every year, with the exception of seventh and ninth grades, we have seen increases. So, while our, our NWEA MAP scores may not indicate increases, we are showing increases on our OST, and that's what MAP is designed to do. It's designed to give us that alarm, so to speak, so that we know where we need to intervene and with whom and how often.
Good evening, Board. The GO4, Students with Disabilities. So, all the information that was shared by Dr. Ragland and Dr. Martin, those students with disabilities are included in those numbers as well, excluding the students who are alternately assessed. So, the SMART goal that started last year, we want to increase the ELA performance by 20% for students with disabilities by 2027, which is a pretty aggressive goal. But some of the things that the district has put in place is the newly formed District Attendance Task Force Team. We have hired an additional truancy officer to assist with the efforts with the task force team. The continuation of district and building PBIS teams, the continuation of district and building internal monitoring teams to review IEPs and ETRs, or otherwise known as individual educational plans. And also, last year, we started our Student Services Night for family and communities for engagement to help support and engage and and instruct parents and community members on the services that we provide in the district for our students with disabilities. So, the measures in progress, our target again is 20% increase in English Language Arts performance for students with disabilities. And so, as you can see for the year 2022, 23, you can see the scores. The trajectory has declined or decreased. And so, in looking at this information and these numbers, we try to figure out, you know, what is the plausible root cause for this decrease in performance along with the numbers that the doctors presented as well. And so, one of the biggest Achilles' heel that we saw as a district is the attendance rate. So, the attendance, as you know, does impact students' instruction and their ability to learn, especially the students with disabilities. So, currently, our district sits at a 37% chronic absenteeism rate compared to the state's average at 25%. If you know, chronic absenteeism is at least 10, missing 10% of school days, which equates to about 18 days in a school year. And so, if a student is mildly chronically absent, which is about 10 to 15%, a student loses about nine weeks of instruction. So, if a student is moderately chronically absent, that equates to about four to five months of lost instruction. And so, if a student is 25% severely chronically absent, that's about one to two years of lost instruction. So, the depiction that was just passed out to you will show our students with disabilities compared to our typical students and them coming to school and being instructed. And so, we know students with disabilities are our most vulnerable children, and they need to be here every day. So, in the year 2021, 22, that chronically absenteeism rate is a 49.2% compared to typical students, which is 42. The trajectory is going downward, but as I mentioned, anything above 25, 25% is a loss of at least a year to two years of instruction for a typical student, not to mention a student with disabilities. So, to combat that, again, we have structured and formed a district-wide absent task force team that incorporates our community members because we know that we have to get the kids to school in order to receive instruction. And so, we cannot do this on our own. So, hence, the new team that was formed. And so, also, as Dr. Ragland and Dr. Martin mentioned, our MTSS, we are strengthening that program to ensure, or that structure, to ensure that all students, not just students with disabilities, receive those vital interventions that need to intervene to increase the academic outcomes for students. Are there any questions regarding that information?
First of all, thank you for the information. And Ms. Bray, you actually answered my question about the chronic absenteeism, so making sure the public understood what that meant and that we are above. And it's going to take, this is a village work. This is not just send them to school or don't send them to school. It takes parents, community members to be involved because, as you just stated, if your kid's not here, they can't learn, and it's impacting every single thing, everything that we do. So, I did have a question about some of the scores. I'm trying to think what slide it was. I think maybe slide four? For the reading scores, and I know, Dr. Martin, you kind of briefly talked about this, not to belabor it, but the decline in some of the scores from 24 to 25, to 25, 26. Do we know why some of the scores started going down, the percentages, or?
Well, ultimately, the implementation of a, of a strong curriculum is imperative in order for the decline not to happen. And so, what we did have was a curriculum which was, you know, it's not necessarily on Ed Reports as a research-based, green curriculum. It was the curriculum that we had, along with other pieces of, parts of other things that, you know, were being used in the classroom. But the goal now is to make a concerted effort that everything that we use is aligned to the state and is aligned to what is going to make this shift a little bit differently. Now, ultimately, what we have here is different than what we have on OST, and we did see some growth. But in order for it to keep going in the direction in which we want it to go in, we have to make sure that we're continuing to provide professional learning for the teachers to use the new curriculum so that these numbers will look a little bit different as they navigate through unit to unit. And the goal with that is, is to make sure that with the professional learning from the actual vendor to happen August, September, October, and then November, they'll be able to actually work with the instructional coaches to plan the lessons, to make sure that this, the information that they have within the scope of SAVIS is being transformed in the classroom. The other piece of that is the, the learning walks that have to happen in order to see what's happening in the scope of the classrooms is another indicator that'll help us move and shift these numbers. And I think it's very important to be transparent to see where we started from, even if it's not an increase, but it is a decrease then an increase so that you are very much informed of what we're working on to try to move these numbers.
Thank you for that. And how can parents get involved? I, I hear what the district's doing, but what should be happening at home to support this?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, reading with your child, that will definitely move the, the whole pendulum to a level of comprehension and fluency for parents to actually sit down and kind of spend that time with their child. But I think what's really going to be impactful is this new team that's being put together to kind of give parents the actual strategies that they need to do that at home because everyone's not an educator by nature, but they would be able to actually have some strategies that they can employ in their home.
So, I'm sure I misunderstood you. When you were talking that now we have a high-quality instructional material, but in the past, you inferred that we didn't have high quality.
Yeah, what the, what the department did was actually put a, a list of what they considered embedded to be high-quality. And if the publisher's materials did not get vetted through that process, they're, even if they are considered quality in some other RAM, they're not high-quality as it looks in states for the Ohio Department of Education. So, there's a, there's several websites that they use. One is What Works Clearhouse. The other ones is Ed Reports. And on those websites, if you put the, the name of the publisher and the title of the actual curriculum, it'll let you know if it's red, which, green, or yellow. If it's all green, it meets every component for the research base and validated supports that, I guess, is the, the Ed Reports department puts together, but that's what ODU uses. So, when I say that it's not HQIM, it, that particular curriculum is not on that li, that list.
So, how long have we been using curriculum that's not on the list?
The list came out last year and we adopted it last year.
And we adopted, what, 10 years prior to that?
Yes.
Think how much the world's changed.
Oh, yeah.
So, we're due, and HQIM just has a really specific meaning now, and it's aligned to the science of reading as well.
So, on this, on this list, if you look at third grade, you know, it's 29.8 to 41, and then those third graders went to fourth graders in 24, 25, and they went up. Fourth graders went to fifth graders and went down. Fifth graders went to sixth graders, then it really went down. Sixth graders went to seventh graders and it went up a little bit. And then, seventh graders went to eighth grade and it dropped significantly. What are some, or do we know what some of those are? Is it to students, or is it to teachers, or is it a common, you know, like, do we really try and put strong teachers in third grade? Or how, how do we, how do we go, this is why? Or can we say, this is why that's up and that's down? Or if you take it into math, same thing. I mean, we...
Now, for, for third grade reading, for years, the department made a requirement that the third grade teachers that were teaching reading had to have a reading endorsement. So, are there, there's various pieces to, to your question as it relates to what do a teacher needs and what's the difference between a third grade teacher and a eighth grade teacher per se? But there are certain requirements that they have to have as mandated by the department so that they are able to employ the strategies that's going to allow the students to learn and grow through third grade and beyond.
So, then it's the students or the, or the curriculum?
It can also be rigor of the assessment. Some assessments are known to be more difficult at some grade levels than others.
Yes, they are.
There's a lot, so many variables now, and we digest this in TBT, BLT, BLT, all the systems, systematic structures we have to try to dive into this disaggregated by student groups and things like that and try to understand.
So, it's really, I mean, from what you're saying, then, it's really hard to compare third, third grade here and fourth grade there and even across.
In math especially because of the sequential nature of it. And when, once you start hitting non-integer value numbers, once you start hitting fractions and decimals, the rigor level really goes up, and that's something that we have to be very conscious of and supporting. But you can see it in the assessment sometimes.
And, and that's where adopting HQIM curriculum comes in because it allows us to provide much-needed professional development, not in just how we teach math, but in what we're teaching. And that math is already developed from a research-based way, evidence-based way. We have mathematics educators and mathematicians that the publishers employ, and so, teachers don't have to figure that out. The prog, there is a learning progression, especially in mathematics. So, the science of reading, there's a whole framework.
So the science of reading, there's a whole framework around reading. We do not have the science of math, but we do know what should be taught and when. And we know that there are various ways to teach it, teach that. And so when we adopt a new curriculum, that is helping us as a district to help our teachers to know how to teach this in a conceptual way as well as a procedural way.
Thank you.
I'll make a quick comment. I was looking and I noticed most of these kids, so six, seven, and eight, they would have been in primary grades during COVID. And so it's actually not too bad when you think about it, just realizing that they were at home, right? But if we look at our third graders and how they progress since you use a high-quality curriculum, it's pretty good. Not only do they have like, you know, structured literacy, the teachers are pivoting now because they have to be trained on science of reading too. And so I was just going to give a kudos on that because third grade is improving and it's showing that the science of reading is working. And I also, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know last time I looked at chronic absenteeism, it included kids that had excused absences. So if they are out because they're sick, maybe they have sickle cell, that's another reason why they will be out, especially with our students with disabilities. If they have any health issues, even though it's excused by the school, it's still included in chronic absenteeism. So that's important to think about too. So if they have a medical issue, we can't really do anything about that. I think sickle cell is a really good example because they're in the hospital a lot. And so overall, when we think about our students with disabilities, we have to also think about their medical background. And so I just wanted to give a kudos from educator that I see the work, I'm looking at the numbers when it comes to the literacy and being mindful that also during COVID, there was a time where they were not counting testing, right? It was just, you're taking a test, but we're not including this into the numbers. So it's imperative to think about our, our kids that may have illnesses, but then also where these kids were during COVID. Because these third graders would have been preschool?
Preschool.
Yeah. And that's really good. If their brain is developing from zero to six and they were able to come in third grade and was it 30%, that's really big to be able to do that.
And so, thank you. So as a nurse, I'm like, I get the chronic absenteeism because the health, when I see the numbers, I'm like, I keep forgetting COVID was just five years ago and these students are impacted by that. So thank you, Ms. Miller, for bringing that to everyone's attention. I think it's important to say, we still, it's still the impact, right? It's been five years, we think, oh, it's over. But the impact is life-lasting and long-lasting. That's why we want to do everything we can in the communities, at schools, to make sure these kids hit the milestones that states are setting. And of course, no one's thinking about the impact of COVID, so thank you.
And even with, I know you said the right teacher, we were mandated to have science of reading training by this June. So they're still, you know, still learning and the science of reading is how the brain works, how the brain learns how to read. And so them implementing that, if our kids don't have that literacy foundation, then math is going to be a struggle.
Correct.
And so it's just imperative to also remember that our teachers are learning the science of reading. It's not an easy task to learn that. And, you know, teachers are always in a place where you have to pivot because the state makes laws and a lot of them have never been educators, but... But I just wanted to give a kudos and realize that within the work, that it was, COVID was a big piece of that also.
Thank you. And I just want to add too, that the state has done research, they have published a document, and they have looked at where reading and math...
Intersect?
I'm sorry?
You say intersect?
Where they, yes, where they intersect. So there is a correlation, not causation, those are two different definitions, but they have shown that from grade three through high school, that as reading scores improve, so do math scores. And so if you look at the graph, it is pretty much a straight line, meaning they increase as reading increases, so does math increase. So they, they are correlated, which means that we can't say if you're a great reader, you're going to be a great math student, but we can say that students who score well in their reading tests will likely also score well on their math tests. Because you have to be able to read the test in order to do the math, right?
We're quickly, where, give me just 90 seconds of where we at when it comes to after-school tutoring.
At the elementary level, we have six teachers that are interested in after-school tutoring. That tutoring is supposed to start November 3rd. Ultimately, we might be able to service 60 kids is what one of the admin said. We thought we were going to get a whole lot more teachers that wanted to be a part of that, and this is just for the elementary, one through six. We do have Power Her and Power Him, which do have some components of after-school, but the goal is to try to start that November 3rd. I just got to kind of circle back around to the buildings to make sure that those teachers are still interested before any contact home to invite students to come. Because it will be limited because we don't have a lot of teachers that are interested in doing it.
And to Ms. Miller's point, any student that may be sick, have a chronic illness, in my department, we do provide ESY, which is Extended School Year Services, depending on if they have lost any regression in instruction compared to their typical peers. Or we may provide compensatory education if they have been absent and we know that they need that instruction or they redo the instruction. Even if a student with a disability is suspended over 10 days, we do provide instruction for a student with disability in that regard as well.
And then tutoring in middle and high schools, we have approximately 10 to 12 teachers in each building. They are after-school three days a week. I know the high school tutors those three days, I think it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, until 6 o'clock. We do offer tutoring in every subject area, as well as we have a, a teacher who is bilingual, so we can work with students who are ESL. I know the same is true for the middle school as well, and they tutor until 4 o'clock on their three days.
And once the elementary part is up and running, it'll actually be two days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, which kind of align to the current program that's in place with fifth and sixth, which is Power Her, Power Him. And that will be reading and math. The goal is to have literacy across the curriculum, not just say we're focusing heavily on just literacy and, and reading, but to make sure we give emphasis to the other content areas as well.
Thank you. Board, anything else?
I just want to just go right back to that chronic absenteeism real quick. Like you said, Mrs. Bray, even though you give those services, the state still counts them as absent. So when we look at that chronic absenteeism rate, I want the public to understand that, yes, the students may be getting services by the state definition, doesn't matter, they're still counting that. So each district's going to look a little different based on the number of students they have that have services for, just say, you know, for chronic conditions or any type of disability. So that's something to keep in mind as well. So thank you, ladies, for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Denny, and thank you to your executive leadership team for that in-depth presentation, which we'll discuss further in our next work session. At this time, we're going to move on to 9.03, New and Revised Board Policies, first read. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thanks, President Smith. Board, you should have before you, I believe, it's 17 policies. These are the first half, there are 34 total. This is the first half of the fall update through the Niola Subscription Service. And so, Board, again, we would hopefully do, this is first read, we would be looking to do second read and approval in November, and then that would be the first read of the second half of that batch with a subsequent second read and approval of those in December. So hopefully by December, we worked through the fall update. But that, that would, that would just be the report at this time is, is first read on these particular 17 board policies.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Of course, Board, we knew this was coming, so let's take the time to read through these policies at your leisure. We can have discussion further at our next work session, and let's be ready to come and vote on this at our next board meeting, please. Moving on to 9.04, Facilities Update. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith. Board, this report, the 9.04, the facilities update is going to be brought to us by Mr. Jeremy Day, Executive Director of Business Affairs.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. A couple updates here for you. Our central office, future central office parking lot is just about done. It's all completed. They were doing punch list items here recently. Right now, they're in final inspections with, with the city. So as soon as that's done, we should be able to pay them out and we should be good there. So turned out being really, really nice there. We're hoping for, to go to bid on the actual renovation project probably in the beginning of the calendar year is what we're thinking. I'll keep you updated on that when I know more. We've got our baseball field fencing should be arriving soon. I know you've seen kind of a flattened area for quite a while. They have been working on it. They're working on the fencing now, getting it all painted. It's going to be black just to match the stadium fencing that way. So that should be arriving soon. We should be getting concrete pads poured for the dugouts here very soon as well, hoping by the end of the week. The scoreboard is in, it's installed. The permit has been applied for, for the electrical. So as soon as we get that in, we'll get that up and running and should be nice. It turned out pretty nice. We tried to match it with the football, with the stadium scoreboard as well with the top arch, so turned out pretty nice on that end. In the, in the front of the high school, I don't know if you've noticed it or not yet, there is a fence up there now. It's a, it's a six-foot aluminum rail fence. That's going to be housing a solar lab. We got a grant, Mr. Almstutz got a grant last year about this for solar panels. So this is, we're doing the installation. We want to do a fencing project around that as well. There'll be some outdoor furniture coming as well for that project. This is something where, way back in the initial build of the, of the, of the north and south campus, all those patio areas that you see when you drive around, they all really were supposed to be learning areas, outdoor learning areas. You know, prices skyrocketed, things had to be cut, so I'm kind of playing catch-up with some of those things, and this is one of those now. The property that you guys had a resolution for last month at June Field, to, to be able to sell that property, the auction has come live, it was last Friday in the paper. We do need to run that for at least one month. The public bid opening will be on December 1st at 10 a.m. So that's my facilities update. Is there any other questions?
No questions, just a couple comments. I'll say those, say these in front of the board as well. We definitely need to look at the PA system at the football field.
I can update you a few, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, go right ahead.
So, so, yes. So actually, recently, me and Mr. Merrill and I went down to do a demo at, down at Taft High School. And we, yeah, Sturgill Field. And we heard what their system is, and when you, when you hear our system as compared to, it really makes you question and wonder. So we've already had a couple vendors out so far. We got another one tomorrow, so there'd be the third vendor coming out. The first two have said the exact same thing so far, in that it's not so much the speakers at all. It's really the, it's really the, the press box side of things. So we already have a plan for that in place. We do have another vendor coming out tomorrow. I'm assuming it'll be something similar that way. But that is something that we've kind of thought about. Mr. Merrill has already been on top of with that demo. So it's, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That is coming. Improvements to that, yes.
No, I just wanted the rest of the board to know that that conversation has been had. I don't know if you've attended any of the games, but we could definitely use some improvements on that. The other thing is the rap on the fencing. I know, where are we at with completing that?
It actually, we got all the pieces at this point. We've got one more home game. So, and it did come, just some of the pieces just came late. I don't know the vendor ultimately, just we didn't get it in time for that. So we put up what we had for that. We do have the completed pieces. We get that up there for you. And then we're working on scheduling as far as the taking down part of that as well because we don't want it up in the winter and all that, just for longevity of it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Day. Thank you. Moving right along to 10.01 Personnel Schedule. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Mr. Smith, can I interrupt for a minute? It dawned on me while we were doing the superintendent's reports that I was a little remiss. I should have asked Ms. Miller to abstain on the September 17th Education Minutes. So on the September 22nd, because we did not swear her in until the end of the meeting. So it was my error on that part. So if I could change the record that Ms. Miller abstained on those minutes?
Yes, Mrs. Seymour, let the minutes reflect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving back into 10.01 Personnel Schedule. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Smith, and Randy, thanks for that too. The board you should have before you, and good evening, Ms. Wilson's here, Executive Director of Human Resources, Legal Affairs. Should there be any questions? The board you should have before you schedules A, B, C, D, and E, and the recommended action would be to approve those personnel schedules as presented.
Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to move, we approve the personnel schedules as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now's the time for discussion.
I would just like to draw your attention to Schedule D and piggybacking on the presentation that you just heard from the Executive Directors of Teaching and Learning and Student Services. You can sort of see where our priorities are and some of our supplementals. We have a number for after-school tutoring, literacy, our literacy grant. So if you take a look at that, you can see that the district is focusing on the one plan, and it's all aligned.
Thank you.
Board, anyone else, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Knighton? Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously, board, thank you very much. Let's move on to 10.02, Resolution Requesting Alternative Resident Educator License. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thanks again, Mr. Smith, and thank you, board, for that, and thank you also, Ms. Wilson. 10.02, Board, is a resolution requesting alternative licensure for a particular resident educator. And so, Board, the recommended action would be to approve the resolution as presented.
Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now's the time for discussion. Mr. Denny, if you don't mind, can you elaborate on the reason for doing this?
Absolutely, and I'll turn to Ms. Wilson too if I miss anything. So, Board, this is for one particular educator at the south campus, one of our specials teachers. She is required to have a resident educator license, the issuance of an alternative resident educator license, and basically needs to obtain the certificate of completion for the Health IPT program. So it's basically an alternative licensure resolution, and it's required by the State Board of Education when you, or ODEW, when you apply for a license. This is required in this particular instance. Ms. Wilson?
Now, just elaborate a little bit. She was working under a substitute teaching license while, while she finished her coursework. And so she's finished, she, and she is now ready to advance to a resident educator license. And she's, it's part of our Grow Your Own program, and she's wonderful.
Awesome, thank you for that. Board, anything else? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, can you run the vote?
Ms. Knighton? Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Board, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson. Moving on to 10.03, Resolution for National School Psychology Week. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and again, thank you, board. Board, you should have before you a resolution for National School Psychology Week. We are very appreciative of the role that our school psychologists play. We currently have five of them employed within the district, and their scope is immense. They do such a wide variety of services, working directly with kids on a non-stop basis, but also working with adults as well. So this resolution, board, simply calls, calls attention to the contributions that they make and gratitude expressed thereto. So, Board, the recommended action would be simply to approve the resolution for National School Psychology Week, which happens to be the week of November 3rd through 7th as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, National School Psychology Week, November 3rd through the 7th, 2025, as presented.
I'll second.
That's been motioned and seconded. Board, is there any discussion? Ms. Knighton, if you don't mind, could you read that resolution?
The resolution for National School Psychology Week, from November 3rd through the 7th, 2025, whereas Wentonville City School District schools can more... Whereas Wynton Woods City School District schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn and they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered supports. And whereas all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive education that enables that enables them to strive, grow, and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Children's mental health is directly linked to their learning and development and the learning environment survives in optimal contexts for good mental health. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas school psychologists are specially trained to deliver continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning and help children thrive by nurturing their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. School psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning as well as individual strengths, utilize data-based decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the vital role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of Wynton Woods City School District students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wynton Woods City School Board of Education encourages all district students and staff to join in the observance of National School Psychology Week, November 3rd through the 7th, 2025, and observance for a future National School Psychology Week as declared by the National Association of School Psychologists, adopted this 27th day of October, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Knighton. Board, anyone else?
Thank you. Just want to say thank you to the school psychologists for all that they do.
Absolutely. A key member of the team here at Wynton Woods, so we appreciate all that they do. Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, can you run the vote?
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. That vote passed unanimously, board, thank you very much. Let's move on to 10.04 Resolution, American Education Week. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, you should have before you a resolution declaring American Education Week during the month of November, 2025. In particular, it's the week actually of the OSBA Conference. It's November 17th through 21st, 2025. And the uniqueness of the American system is of course not only to provide achievement and growth opportunities for students, but also equity and access. So those dual aims are critically important. So, board, the recommended action would be to approve the resolution for American Education Week, November 17th through 21st, as presented.
Thank you, Superintendent Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, American Education Week, November 17th through the 21st, 2025, as presented.
I second the motion.
That's been motioned and seconded. Board, at this time, we'll go into discussion. Ms. Miller, if you don't mind, reading that resolution for us, please?
American Education Week Proclamation, November 17th through 21st, 2025. Whereas, American Education Week was first observed in December, 1921 as an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of our public schools and to acknowledge the importance of community support for public education. And whereas teachers, administrators, education professionals, and educational support staff working at the local, regional, or state levels serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, the strength, vitality, and freedom of our nation depends on citizens who are dedicated to the education of the next generation through the common school, which welcomes all children and strives to educate them to their highest potential. And whereas, partnerships among public schools and their communities help build the support for public education that will sustain this vital institution through its many challenges in educating our children. And whereas, the Wynton Woods City School District Board of Education will ensure a quality education for all children that will provide them with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. Be it therefore resolved that on this day, October 27th, 2025, that American Education Week shall be a time to focus attention on the importance of our public schools, its students, and its staff. The Wynton Woods City School District Board of Education hereby proclaims November 17th through 21st, 2025 as an American Education Week.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Board, anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, can you call the vote?
Ms. Knighton? Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. That vote passed unanimously, board, thank you so much. And to all of our educators, we appreciate the work you do both in and outside of the classroom because we know it, your work extends beyond the classroom and beyond the workday. So we appreciate each and every one of you who dedicate pretty much your life to helping educate our future. Moving right along to 10.05 Resolution, International Education Week. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith. 10.05 Board is a resolution for International Education Week, which is the week also the same as American Education Week, November 17th through 21st of the year 2025. And, board, the recommended action would be to approve this resolution, International Education Week, November 17th through 21st, as presented.
Thank you, Superintendent Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve the Resolution, International Education Week, November 17th to 21st, 2025, as presented.
I'll second.
The motion and we'll take a second from Ms. Knighton.
Knighton?
Yes. At this time, we'll go into discussion. And Mr. Spielman, if you don't mind, can you read that for us?
I'd love to.
Thank you so much, sir.
Resolution, International Education Week, November 17th to 21st, 2025. Whereas the week of September of, the week of November 17th to 21st, 2025 is International Edu- Education Week. And whereas, we as a nation are charged with broadening our focus and becoming engaged in building international relationships. And whereas, we should expand our efforts to learn from other countries about techniques and practices that will help us improve our own system of education. And whereas, we should provide leadership in educational issues in appropriate international forums and collaboratively work on initiatives of common benefit. And whereas, it is appropriate to educate and encourage students to learn other languages, cultures, and challenges outside our nation's borders. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wynton Woods City School Board of Education formally promotes and supports international awareness and the importance of teaching our students international education skills. Adopted this 27th day of October, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. Board, anybody else?
Just wanted to say for this, this resolution and the work before, I mean, this is why we do the work we do, right? It just, education is so important just to the fabric of our whole nation, so internationally and nationally and just in our communities and everything. Thank you to all the people that make education so important, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Seeing no one else, Mr. Seymour, can you call the vote?
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Board, thank you so very much. That passed unanimously. And once again, just the importance of teaching our students international education skills. That just, that really, that really speaks volumes right there. Let's move on to 10.06 List of Schools Declared as Impractical to Provide Pupil Transportation. Superintendent Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Smith. 10.06 Board, you should have before you two attachments. One is a list of schools declared impractical for transportation, 2025, 2026. This has come to you already this year. It was in July. This list has been amended. There's also a resolution to accompany this that authorizes these schools to be essentially what we call payment in lieu of schools. So they're within the 30-minute drive radius, but it's impractical to transport because almost always very low numbers of students and it just not being economically feasible to do so. So the Second Amendment, or Second, excuse me, attachment is the resolution. And, board, the recommended action would be to approve the list of schools declared as impractical to provide pupil transport for the 25, 26 school year and also approve the resolution as presented. And Mr. Jeremy Day is also standing by to answer any questions you might have or if you need additional information.
Thank you, Superintendent Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the list of schools declared as impractical to provide pupil transportation for the 25, 2025, 2026 school year and resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. We'll give it to.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that.
It's okay. I like the, I like the enthusiasm. It's been motioned and seconded. You get that, Mr. Seymour? Absolutely. Excuse me. Anyone have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, can you run the vote?
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. That vote passed unanimously. Thank you very much, board. Moving right along to Board of Reports. We'll go to 11.01, the Legislative Report, and we're happy to announce our new legislative representative. Mr. Spielman's going to give us a three-minute synopsis.
The Legislative Report this month is 38 pages. I'm going to briefly do it in three paragraphs.
My man.
Property taxes have been the big topic in the news from the state. There's HB 186 authorizing reduction in school property taxes affected by a millage floor and HB 335. We've been talking about these for several months now. Subtitled as Property Tax Overhaul in the report have moved in the House and Ways Committee, House Ways and Means Committee, which took took testimony from both sides on bills. A number of school district representatives testified to the committee regarding these bills. No vote was taken for the bill to move out of committee. So it's still there. They're talking about maybe before Thanksgiving. Reading the report, I found one humorous comment. It says, "A new analysis from a nonpartisan think tank suggests that there's no easy way to replace property taxes should they be eliminated by voters." We paid for a study to say that.
Well said. Well said.
Finally, I noticed in the report that Lieutenant Governor Jim Tressel has been having meetings regarding workforce development. Just as an interesting statistic was noted by Chancellor Mike Duffy of the Department of Higher Education, currently only 53% of Ohio's high school graduates attend college. Nationally, that number is 62%. I didn't realize where, that's nine points below what the, what the national average is. And the rest of all the information is contained in the Legislative Report that everybody's been sent.
Wonderful. Thank you for that report, Mr. Spielman. Appreciate you stepping up into the Legislative Report room. 11.02, The Great Oaks Report was sent by our current representative, Mr. Jeff Birdy. And within that, there were three students highlighted. The three students, and I apologize in advance if I jacked up these names. I've been studying for the last 30 minutes before the meeting and it, it still ain't popping. But Junior Mel Bing Asende at Scarlet Oaks, who's attending for dental assisting, will be serving as the O eight, sorry, H O S A parliamentarian. She's junior. And then we have Senior Loida Lopez Mendoza at Scarlet Oaks for Health Technology. And she will be a voting delegate for H O S A, H O S A. And then lastly, we have Junior Cheyenne Bostick at Scarlet Oaks for Dental Assisting. And she will also be a voting delegate-elect for H O S A. And for those of you who don't know what that is, because I did not, I Googled it. And H O S A is Future Health Professionals, is a student organization that prepares members for careers in health science field. It does this by providing opportunities for leadership development, technical skill building, and networking through a program of motivation, awareness, and recognition. So congratulations to those three who have positions on on that organization. That's, that's a nice accomplishment.
I was going to ask you, surely you know what that is, and you did.
I, I do now. I did my research before this meeting.
There you go.
Come prepare. There we go. You better believe it, don't want to be embarrassed. Uh, anyway. 12.01, we're going to go into Board Member Comments, and we'll start with our trustee treasurer, Mr. Randy Seymour, is a man of few words. Go right ahead.
Nothing, thank you.
I knew it, I called it. Mr. Spielman, go ahead, sir.
I'm, I'll also be few words.
Oh, you better.
First of all, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the Student College Board Recognition Winners, the Student Athletes, the Students' Character Award Winners, the Teacher of the Month, the African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame Announcement, and Principal Eric Martin. And then for my comment, I recently attended a back-to-back Evening Evening Update in Mason. Some of you may be familiar with the group. They provide orphan care to children in six foreign countries. I was struck by one report of the field director from Nigeria. This time last year, they had a third grader. His assignment was to write a letter to his sponsor, but he could only write his name. With a lot of hard work from his teacher and his tutor and divine help, a miracle occurred. By the end of the year, he was the number one student in his class. A miracle that required a ton of work too, but it can happen. We have an assignment to speak and work for further restoration for all of our students. Given the report tonight, we need further restoration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman, appreciate it. Ms. Miller, do you have anything?
I don't.
Mrs. Knighton?
I, I, I don't. Thank you.
Gotcha. Ms. Bryant?
I think Mr. Spielman said it all.
I, I agree. He spoke volumes to that. Mr. Denny?
It's late. I got a little bit. But I'll be quick. But no, I want to echo what you just shared, Mr. Spielman, with regard to the honors, the recognitions. And I'd like to make sure I thank our team here tonight just for their investment of time and talent and effort in in helping support our staff and and the staff that then in turn leads the children and the families that we're so blessed and fortunate to have in our district. Varsity football playoff bound, we talked about it, Little Miami this Friday night, 7 o'clock. Should we be victorious at home this week and the seeds prevail? It looks like we have a matchup with Princeton at Princeton next week. We shall see. The games have to be played. We don't want, we don't knock on something, but that will be very momentous, as we all know. That is wood. Thank you, sir.
Comment for Killa Zalama.
Also, kudos and congratulations to all the support systems that that are in place to support that team. That's cheer, it's band, the parents, boosters. I mean, it's just, we have such a great support system for so many of our squads. It's just exciting to be able to see that. Seventh grade football, by the way, 8-0 and E C C champs. So kudos to seventh grade for stepping up and showing out. Also want to give a shout out to the band for their performance at the Little Miami Band Festival. It's a couple of weeks back, but, and then also the drum line for doing that and then going downtown to the river to do the Walk to End Alzheimer's March earlier this month as well. So made for a long day, but they really showed up and represented us in a very high fashion. So we want to give a shout out to them and the staff that worked with them. PTA and boosters, again, I touched on boosters, but I want to mention PTA. They do so much. You know, so if you're not a PTA member out there in TV land, consider it. They do a ton to support our kids and our families and our staff. And finally, I want to give a quick shout out to the Forest Park Passers. Have you all heard about this yet? They are six and seven-year-olds, actually, six, seven, and eight. It's a Forest Park Recreation League team. Some of our students at Wynton Woods Primary South are on the team. But the Forest Park Girls Passer Soccer Team is one of two top teams in the region. And they have qualified for the Ohio S A Y State Tournament, November 8th and 9th. And if they're victorious, then they move on to November 15th and 16th. And again, several of the players on the team are second, third graders at Wynton Woods Primary School and Wynton Woods Elementary School. So we're just really proud of their accomplishment. That's pretty amazing.
Yes, it is.
Can we get information about those games or where they are or times or?
I, I will work on that, yes. Let me, let me, let me chase that down because that would be fantastic. Yeah, absolutely.
We actually, when we went to one of the fourth or council meetings, they recognized.
Same team.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what we were just talking about.
I remember that meeting.
And the coach, at least one of the coaches also happens to be a Wynton Woods parent. So there's just a lot of connections. It's just great to see that. So, yeah, great point, Ms. Knighton. But no, that concludes the comments on my part, so thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. To, just to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Just to echo the sentiments of my fellow Board members, congratulations to everyone, thank you to everyone. I was down there with the drum line at the, the walk, they were, the walk was absolutely appreciative to the district for allowing the drum line to be down there. I think this is the third or fourth year, and this year they led the march off, so, yeah, it was, it was, it was very impactful, and a lot of people were very mesmerized by how the drum line performed. We're around the corner, make sure you vote. Every vote counts, and every vote matters. Your vote can be the, the change that we need, so educate yourself and vote. That's all I'm going to say, educate yourself and get out there and exercise your right to vote. With that being said, we'll move on to 13.01, Board Motions and Recommendations, seeing none. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move into 14.01, which is an executive session in Board, at this point in time, I do not see a need to go into executive session, so we'll move straight into 15.01, I now call this meeting of the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education adjourned. Thank you to all in attendance, and thank you once again to Waycross Community Media, Tony, you and your team, we always appreciate you for broadcasting these meetings for us.